Twenty second, twenty twenty-two Walton City Council Regular Council Meeting. Tonight, I go ahead and call this meeting to order. We start off with our application allegiance night led by Council of Halyar.
Please stand with me, face our flag, and place your right hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's stance. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please feel free to be seated.
All right, that brings us to our now, uh, just our announcements, our first public health announcement, led by Council Brooks.
Um, I actually would just like to remind people for part of their back to school thoughts and lists to just check the updates for people's vaccines and make sure that everyone gets back to school as safe and healthy as we can in these times. I talked last council meeting about checking in with the new products that are coming out from Moderna and Pfizer around the, um, the new vaccine types and that those are supposed to be even more effective. So keep an eye out for those and, um, everyone stay healthy in this next upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm number two is the Twalton Library Foundation Bind to Wine Event. Jerianne, it's back. Welcome back. It's been, it's been a few years.
Uh, Ms. Mayor and Councillors, thank you for having us this evening. My name is Royce Hermanz. I'm the president of the Walton Library Foundation now since February of last year. You know, Jerianne Thompson, our librarian. Uh, again, thank you for having us. The foundation is a small organization today. It's got five board members. But it's a small organization with a very large heart, we like to think. And that large heart is manifested self last year with three gifts to the community, which were represented by an unusually large one, a hundred thousand dollars, the maker space in the library, which was completed last year. And then the more typical giving that includes the Oregon Battle of Books Annual Students as well as a thousand books of, or your garden. So that said, while we don't have any maker space going this year, the foundation is working to replenish its debt endowments. Find a line back on the pockets. Um, we are anticipating a smaller event this year. Camp it down a little bit, recognizing that we're still in a kind of environment that's difficult for some. So we're trying to do a kind of sixty percent size events if possible. And look forward to that on Sunday, September eighteenth this year. Hoping you can join us and if you have questions about this for us, please.
Questions for Royce because some councillors, since it's been so long since finding wine with COVID, questions about the event. Do you want to cover it a little bit of what happens?
Well, yeah, so you know, um, just going back, the last event was April twenty nineteen and we were in it's traditionally been an April event, so, um, we were in the run up for the April twenty twenty event that happened. So we went sort of into dormancy, not on the giving side, but the fence sort of dormant elsewhere other than foundation gifts and which we have been grateful for. But at this point, uh, to give you a little background about what we do on Sunday, September the eighth, we will have, we're aiming to sell a hundred and twenty tickets and who have selling two hundred past. With that said, we are scaling back the wine recount from formerly ten to this year we got six. We will have gourmet food samplings and we will have Irish Gaelic, sorry, Irish Alec band playing that evening with a very fine little player and her husband, Charles. So very entertaining. Also, we will be featuring the Maker Space that night. We will be bringing, uh, Jerianne is recruiting Maker Space ambassadors. Patrons who come out that night and join the event and have a patron, take a lot of tour of Maker Space so that we can reveal this further to the public and the, the, so. That's kind of it. Uh, we will start at seven PM that night, nine thirty is our closing time. We look forward to a fund save and, uh, worthy economic events that we can help start rebuilding the endowment.
Right. And how much does it cost per person?
Fifty dollars per person. Um, there are on the save the date cards you got, uh, there's details on that. If you click on that, you can go to, it'll take you to the website, which will give you more details as well.
What's the website for folks that don't have the card? I gotta do a little marketing here for you. Where do I get tickets if I don't have this card?
It's the Walton Library Foundation website that you will take into when you
The past, you could buy tickets at library. Can you still do that in person? Uh, questions?
I was gonna ask if only sixty percent of the councillors could go.
Any other questions?
Is, so is there, um, options for people that don't drink alcohol wine?
Traditionally, we have something. Yes, we have. I've actually been recruiting people and they said, well, we'll take care of you.
We usually have wine juice or lemonade or some other beverage.
Okay, great. And then, and the, um, well, anyway, thank you so much for your service and your work and, uh, and I plan on going after my calendar, but I'm gonna go. Thanks.
Other questions?
And they can still make a contribution even though they're not going, right?
Former fundraiser here.
I might say in the Walton Live issue of last week, there's a wonderful, uh, one page, uh, half page article by Jay Harris, who's a
Informer.
If you like wine, the Six Wines have a wonderful range of wine grapes that I've never been met before, so.
It's always been fun in the past. All right. Well, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here or in the Zoom space would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Do you have any signups, Nicole? You don't have to be signed up. Once, twice, all right. With that, we'll move on in our agenda to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, uh, our items considered routine, they will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of, four items. Item number one, consideration for approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Item two, consideration of resolution number five, six, four, zero, dash, twenty-two. Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for a cleanup grant and approving and appropriating special purpose revenues the city's general fund during the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Item number three, consideration of resolution number five, six, four, one, dash, twenty-two. Authorizing the city manager to execute a deed acquiring property for Basalt Creek Parkland. And finally, item number four, consideration of resolution number fifty-six, forty-two, dash, twenty-two. Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Metro for Basalt Creek Parkland acquisition using two thousand nineteen Parks and Nature Bond measure local share program funds and appropriating special purpose revenues in the city's park development fund beginning during the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Is there any item that the council would like removed tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds to adopt the consent agenda as ready, especially on the motions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. It sounds unanimous. Right. That brings us to general business. Item number one, climate friendly and equal community status and next steps. We have staff and DLCD here tonight. Cody.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, I wanted to say how excited I am to be with you in person for the first time. It's wonderful to see you all in real life rather than just on the Zoom screen. I've been asked to queue up the continuation of a council discussion which began at your session held last Thursday, August eleventh. Topic of the discussion, other cities should formally join the city of Springfield and at least seven other cities pursuing legal actions seeking delay implementation of the climate making equitable rules. The city of Springfield and the other cities plan to file this challenge within sixty days of the August twelfth effective date. As noted at this point, there are seven other cities that have indicated that they plan to challenge. We are aware of several others discussing the possibility of joining. Litigation will be divided between sitting space on the size of each city's budget. I'm just briefly, I wanted to back up and remind everyone how we got to this point. The CFEC rulemaking effort was initiated by Oregon Land Conservation and Development Commission in twenty twenty. And that was in response to Governor Kate Brown's executive order twenty dash oh four directing state agencies to take actions to reduce and regulate rehouse emissions. The Department of Land Conservation, or DLCD, developed these rules along with a rulemaking advisory committee comprised of more than forty community members. And a draft of the proposed rules was published in December of twenty twenty-one. There were concerns raised by a number of communities regarding the perceived overly prescriptive nature of rules and the aggressive timeline. But the temporary rules were adopted at the May nineteenth, LCDS competing. Additional comments were accepted between May nineteenth and July first. And the permanent rules were adopted on July twenty-first and filed with the Oregon Secretary of State on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. In particular, the rules will impact the way that Walton manages its parking mandates and the amount of time, effort, and analysis required to update the city's transportation system plan, which may lead to an increase in costs, consultants, and staff time. As you heard from legal counsel at the executive session last week, the rules will be challenged on the basis that they exceed the statutory authority of DLCD and that potentially DLCD did not follow correct procedures in enacting the rules. The example cited at the executive session narrowed in on the fiscal impact statement, which provided no reference to any actual numbers despite acknowledging that the rules will have a fiscal impact on local governments. And that is estimated to be between five to eight million dollars per city based on estimates from the League of Oregon Cities. That's the background context for the discussion this evening. Based on what we heard from the discussion at the executive session, there are three potential, potential actions for consideration. The first of which is to join the city of Springfield's legal challenge to the CFEC rules and to contribute financially to the cost of litigation. Two, you can choose not to join the legal challenge. I just wanted to note that if that is a course of action you decide on, staff is happy to continue to stay engaged with the legal org in cities to make sure we're apprised of any updates and, and to provide you with periodic updates on how that's going. And then the final option for consideration is to consider other strategies such as working with state legislators to enact modifications to the adopted CFEC rules. So with that, I would turn it back over to Mayor Dubinik unless there are any questions for me.
Oh, questions right now. This, uh, Steve or Chris, would you like to add anything at this point?
I'll defer to Steve at the moment.
No, I think that was an excellent summary. I don't have anything to add at this point. Thank you.
I would just, um, Chris Crane, acting city attorney, reiterate that there are a number of cities, at least seven, that are publicly, um, committed to challenging the rule. And I'm aware of several others that, uh, have made a preliminary decision to that effect, but are not yet public. So the list is growing, but I believe staff has described accurately the options available to the city council.
Uh, at this point, I'll ask the representative from DLCD to come on up and give us a briefing. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, for the record, I'm Evan Manville. I'm a mitigation planner at Department of Land Conservation and Development. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the work I've been doing. Um, first, uh, the context of the rulemaking was, was in part in response to the executive order, but it was really in response to the climate crisis. And the housing affordability crisis and the inequity crisis. And those are having real world effects on Oregonians livelihood. They're losing their homes. They're losing their lives. They're losing their businesses. There are real costs. So our commission decided to take action. And they developed these rules, um, over the last couple of years. And it's kind of three parts that I want to just highlight, not to give them the details. The first is asking communities to identify climate friendly areas where climate friendly development would be allowed to happen if the market supported it. Walton doesn't have to do any of that. You already did your town center in Metro's twenty forty plan. So you were good. That's not a responsibility of yours. The second piece is reforming costly parking mandates. And this is really contentious. I know that. There are kind of two parts to that. The first is deregulating parking near frequent transit. And the second part is take choosing one of three options for your city to follow. That's a little bit more complex. Can be really simple and follow dozens of cities around America and the world and deregulate parking, let the market build what it demands. But you can take a more complex. So that would cost more than just deregulate. And the third piece of the rulemaking that really context is changes in how we do transportation system planning. So that's updating the plan, the standard we've had for, uh, years and really trying to better meet uh, our climbing goals and provide people real transportation choices. So that's kind of the core of the rulemaking is that, that's what it's about. I sent you way too much information. I don't expect you to read it. I'm happy to come talk to you about it more at another time. What you're here tonight, uh, is considering how costly this might be, um, how hard it might be to implement if there's any flexibility. I, as far as the cost scale, um, you don't have to do CFAs. Sorry, climate friendly areas. Parking reform, uh, some of your partner cities have estimated how much that would cost. And those who said, hey, we've got to hire a consultant, Oregon City said that would cost about fifty thousand dollars for a consultant and about twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand five hundred in staff. Marion County, which has a large, about thirty some thousand people that have to reform parking for, so it's similar. Sixty thousand dollars for a consultant and eight thousand dollars in staff time. Smaller cities, less staff time and no consultant. Larger cities, more staff time and more consultant. I think, you know, there's a kind of parallel cities, I think, numbers as far as how much that might cost if you chose you needed a consultant for that. Now, the, so the third piece, as far as the cost responsibility for you, is transportation system planning. And traditionally, the state, because we set up the rules for transportation system planning, fund transportation system plan updates. ODOT has done that in the past and will continue to do that in the future. They have found fifteen million dollars as a down payment on the transportation system plan updates. These updates don't have a clear timeline. This has the end of twenty twenty-nine. In the metro area, there's no earned deadline out there. So they realize that this is a down payment for those cities that don't want to move closer. So the governor's order told us to do, take action, but also to help you with implementation because we know your straps. You know your straps. So we work to find resources to match your needs. I want you to think about this as a multi-bayernium project because that's what the rules lay it out as. It's really for the next eight, nine years that these rules will be implemented in various type ways. And we're going to keep going to the legislature, asking for funding to help you all. Because you're our partners in the landage program. I know it not feel that way. But that's, that's kind of what we're trying to do. So we've got a big ask out of the legislature to help you all. Regardless of whether you join us in the lawsuit or not, I hope you support that so we can support you. Certainly helping, working with city of Springfield and others, uh, continually, even though we're, we have some disagreements. So, um, multi-bayernium, uh, the last couple of things. First, almost everything in the rule has flexibility about the deadlines. There are five things that don't. Two are some parking reforms. The first step of parking reform and the electric vehicle code stuff, uh, which is pretty small. It's kind of adding onto what the building code division just did. A third is a monkey transportation modeling thing that's due in June twenty twenty-four. And the last two are climate friendly areas. It on the plate. But there's a fair amount of flexibility about all the rest of the stuff in the rules. There's explicit ability for you all to say, hey, our plates are overloaded. We don't have the resources. Uh, this doesn't fit well. Let's sequence it differently. We, as we worked through the rules in the last several months, we heard a lot from local cities and, and we really tried to adjust it to make it flexible. And it was more prescriptive when they first rolled out. Um, and we really tried to scale that back. So while still meeting our goals, because we have some real, real problems out there. And the last two things I would say, uh, one is our commission is full of people with local government in their blood. We have two people who serve in local government currently. We have a former city councillor. We have a former planning commissioner. They, they've seen things from your side of the table. Our department is ours, so full of local government people. Everyone on the CFAC, on the climate friendly, equal communities, rulemaking team has either regional or local government background. So we, we, we get the perspective, we get it tough when the state imposes something on you. So, um, when the commission adopted the rule, they were very, very clear with staff. They said, hey, we might not get this perfect out of the gate. We want you to monitor the implementation. We want you to come back to us every meeting or report to how it's going. If there are problems, let's fix them. If there are things we need to change, let's change them. And the commission has a track record of doing that. It's been doing that with the housing rules. Been finding things that, hey, it's an error. It doesn't quite work. It's, the problem's different than they understood. The commission is very, very much wanting us to reach the goals. They are not vetted forever and ever to rules exactly how they are. That said, we think they were pretty well considered rules and we've, uh, polished them for a long, long time. We extended the deadline for adoption a couple of times. So, um, I think that's all I want to say. We, we certainly appreciate the ongoing work you're doing. Uh, we know this is a challenging ask of you to comply with these rules. And we're, uh, trying to do what we can to make it less hard. So thank you again for your time. Thank you so much for the invitation, Council of Brooks. Thank you, Mayor and the council and the staff here. Really appreciate the ongoing through this.
Thank you. I just, uh, before we launch into questions and comments, I just want to put some guideposts on tonight's discussion, if you will, that we're going to be discussing CFEC at a high level. In my mind, we're not going to get the nitpicky of the different rules and stuff like that. And in my mind, the focus of the discussion I had in the executive session is, you know, do we join the lawsuit, uh, to ask DLCD in the state to help fund this effort, you know, get the funding first rather than go into legislature, uh, in, you know, future sessions. There's quite a few unintended impacts that many cities are seeing. For example, Cornelius, Cornelius, the whole city Cornelius is included in this traffic study because of the way transit's laid out there. And just realistic implementation times. So I want to keep our guideposts pretty straight. I don't want to get to the weeds. You know, I did, I think you did a terrific summary as did Cody. But, you know, we, we need to focus in on, you know, do we want to join the other cities in the area that are, uh, joining the lawsuit? As of last week, Hillsboro has joined and Cornelius has joined. The city of Sherwood is going into an executive session the next week or so to decide if they're going to join. So with that, I just want to make sure we don't go way into the weeds, nitpicking rules and stuff. So with that, I'll open the floor for questions and comments of either Cody or Ethan, right? Evan, I'm sorry. Councilor Ray.
Um, you mentioned some of the cities that, um, have joined. Uh, any other cities that are surrounding us? I know we have, uh, West Lynn next to us.
Don't throw that one to Chris. Chris.
Lake Oswego. Uh, who else?
Yeah, Chris will have to listen.
Surrounding.
It grows each week.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, it does grow each week. And among those that have so far gone public, you're correct. West Lynn, Lake Oswego, Sherwood is considering it. I don't know about Tigerd offhand, um, but good question. I, I have not heard Wilsonville has been involved to this point. Their name has not come up and they have not been on any of the emails that I'm aware of. But of course, obviously Hillsboro, uh, is a big one on the west side in Washington County.
Thank you.
Councilor Press.
So are you saying West Lynn and Lake Oswego did join the lawsuit?
That's correct.
Oh, interesting. Okay. Um, so when I read her packet, it was a little different than what I understood. The purpose of this lawsuit was, is, is the purpose of this just to delay the implementation? Or is it to say it's unconstitutional and get it removed or just throw them out basically?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, if I, if I may. We both, it's so the, the law for challenging a, an administrative rule of a state agency, whether it's LCDC or ODOT or DEQ, gives the court three reasons they can invalidate the rule. One is that it's unconstitutional. The second is that it exceeds the scope of the agency's authority. And the third is that it wasn't, it didn't follow the correct, the agency didn't follow the correct procedures when they adopted it. So I, I, you know, I'm not prepared to go into what arguments, um, might be involved in the lawsuit. But certainly constitutional grounds is one of the bases a court could rely on. So what the court could do if they find any one of those tests is met, um, is invalidate the rule, at which point it goes back to the agency. And they can revise it as necessary. They can readopt it. They can abandon it. I, I believe it, it's accurate to say that's the goal of the litigation is to return that the rules to the agency so that the discussions that should have but didn't happen in this case can happen and the rules can be revised and to reflect the concerns, more of the concerns of, of local government. I, I absolutely respect Evan and all the work he's done over the years. But I think if you heard from the local government advocates, they would say the agency was not very responsive. After about January one of this year, when the actual rules became, uh, available, prior to that, it was all visioning kind of stuff. But once the actual rules became effective, um, we don't think what was finally adopted reflects the concerns of local government. And that would be the goal is to have it returned to the agency. So those conversations can occur.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Well, when, when I'm listening to this, um, I mean, the climate, the whole idea of it is great. We all know what the issues are with the home rule and blah, blah. But, um, to me, the bottom line is how can we best effectively, what's our best move forward to effectively get these changes made? Is this lawsuit, is, is that going to, um, kind of harm our relationship with LCDC? Or is lawsuit the way that force the issue? So I think that's our real question is how do we best move forward, hoping to make these, um, little tweaks to the, well, little and big tweaks. little tweaks to the, well, little and big tweaks to this that we think are needed?
Other questions, comments?
I just want to point out that, uh, Mark Gamba from Milwaukee has asked me
Okay. Uh, Mayor Gamba, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, Councilor, or Mayor Bubanek and Council. Sorry, I couldn't join you this evening in, in person. I would have loved to, since that's so rare these days, but, um, I had a million other things that would have conflicted. So, uh, I just, I thought it might be useful to you and, and your deliberations on this to hear from another city that, um, isn't joining the lawsuit. Uh, we, not unlike Cornelius, we have enough transit cutting through our city in, in enough ways that, uh, I think the part, on the parking issue, uh, there's less than 10% of the city that we would be able to still require, um, minimums. That said, we, um, have been doing work in this realm for, um, well, about six or seven years. We, we passed a climate action plan, I think, five years ago and started work. Many of these things that, that are being required or suggested were things that we were already in the process of doing. We, there are going to be a few expenses for us, um, in the transportation system plan. It, it changes the way we were going to do it. And we've reached out to the state and it's likely that we'll be getting a grant, uh, to cover those additional expenses. My experience on this has been that, um, when we've been able to have conversations with the L C D and ODOT, which is also, um, mixed into this, that they've been very receptive and very helpful to us, uh, in, in, you know, working towards, uh, what I think is a very important goal. I think, uh, you know, we, um, I don't, I can't remember if it's been pointed out tonight, but Oregon is, um, way behind on meeting the, uh, climate goals that we set. I think it was even 20 years ago. Um, we, we were failing to meet those and the Oregon and the, and the governor's, um, executive orders get us a lot closer. Uh, when, when those are all implemented, it, it's, it's more likely that, um, we, we might actually get pretty close to those, meeting those goals. I, I think it's important work that we're looking at. I, I think, uh, League of Oregon cities estimation on the costs are dramatic. Uh, I'm, I'm curious what city they base that on. I think our additional costs are well under a hundred thousand dollars for, to, to completely implement this entire thing. So, uh, anyway, I just, I, I wanted to be able to say that and then to, um, you know, offer you the opportunity to ask questions if, if you had any curiosities about the way we're proceeding and, and why we are, uh, very comfortable with the rules.
You, Mayor Gamba? Questions, comments?
All the way down here. So, I feel, I feel a little conflicted on one side. Yeah, I, I appreciate that swift climate action needs to be taken and realistic measures need to be taken immediately. Um, and I understand that as somebody who drastically changed their lifestyle, um, to begin about seven, eight years ago. You know, I tried to do as much as I possibly can for climate change. So when I see, you know, these rules being implemented, I mean, I get it. I get the need for drastic change and something that I've personally done in my life. My concerns are there's items on these lists that don't seem very applicable that concern me for some of the people in our most vulnerable, um, communities such as, you know, affordable housing, uh, smaller units, uh, domestic violence shelters, which, I mean, it's concerning to me. So some of these very specific things, which I know what you're saying, that can be addressed. I, I feel like I'm sort of split down the middle. So, I mean, I would be open. I mean, you gave us three options, join, not join, consider other strategies. Right now I feel like I'm in that consider other strategies realm, um, just based on those two, sides of the coin I feel like I'm sitting on right now.
Councilor Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor, and, um, so after our executive session, um, I had more questions than answers. And then I attended, I don't forget the name of the meeting that was Wednesday. And I found a lot, I know that we keep talking about that there's eight and three more possible cities. That's what was listed at the meeting. There were a lot of cities missing. So I reached out to different mayors, Mayor Gamba, Mayor Beatty, and several other mayors and other cities that are missing that will not be joining the lawsuit. And there are mayors that are around us. So that's one thing. There's a mystery kind of conversation around who's joining lawsuit. There are people that are not joining the lawsuit and that are very outspoken about it. And part of the conversation with me was, who do we want to be at the table, working with, whatever department that is that you work for, um, the conservation and land use, working with our local legislators and collaborating with them. Coming from the angle of a lawsuit versus a conversation to me seems premature and, um, not in line with the goals for me of climate action and just rapport building in the way that we usually work as a city. So it feels really aggressive to me. The other piece for me was just the willingness and the conversation that we had already. The understanding that rules changes can be amended. And I've seen this so much just from party activities and other activities that I've been involved in. And that's a real, um, conversation. And then finally, um, I also talked to some of the, um, solutions are with, um, Metro, helping us with exchanges. And I talked to also Counselor, um, Rosenthal about that and some ideas and solutions. And we plan on also meeting with Mayor Gamba, later on in the week to talk about some innovative ways that we can lighten the, the load for Metro. And I just think that creative solution making, um, and I just have to agree with what other people have said. I think there's going to be a big problem with this lawsuit. One is there's a nuanced conversation going on about the rules versus what the impact to our climate is if we keep delaying and deferring action. We, we would have had the votes for a climate bill. And then there was a walkout and then we ended up with these rules. And I don't know about you guys, but I joined and listened to the rules as they were making the rules and commented on the rules. And, and the cities had an opportunity to comment during the rules making time. So I don't know if people availed themselves to that. I don't know if other counselors attended those meetings, but I've been interested in this conversation since I got elected. We are in the situation where we have an existential crisis on our hands. And I don't think the voting public is going to be able to differentiate. And I think that there's a piece around this that even when, um, the mayor and I talked about it, I was confused. And, um, and he had explained to me, well, we're just talking about this piece. We're not talking about what we want to do with the rules and the impacts that we want to have and the outcome measures that we want to have for our climate. And I think that's just a big lift in an unnecessary suit, in my opinion. And, um, like I said, I had strong conversations with Mayor Beatty of Beaverton. I don't think that Tigerd's joining. I don't think that Wilsonville's joining. Um, Portland's certainly not joining. Milwaukee's not joining. So, so many of, and I had heard conflicting things about Lake Oswego and West Lynn. So I still want to double check that they're joining because I haven't heard that officially yet. That was not on the list. The other final thing I want to say was, we talked about in that meeting, one of the things that showed up to me was, um, the deferring, putting a stay and what a heavy lift that would be to put a stay. So I think that one of the outcomes that we're looking for is to try to defer this action in the upcoming year. And I don't have a lot of hope that the lawsuit's going to get that done from the conversation that we had on Wednesday. It didn't appear that way to me. And, um, you know, the mayor might have a different opinion on that, but that's not what I heard in that conversation. So I have concerns. And at the same time, I also want to thank you for coming. We did a tour of all of our, um, very, you know, we went to the, uh, Las Casitas. We went to, um, Tuolton Heights, the places that we've been talking about mitigation strategies. And like I said, talking to Counselor Rosenthal, we, we're talking about what exchanges could be so that we can mitigate some of these parking issues and do exchanges for other kinds of mitigation work. So there are solutions out there. It just takes a little bit of creativity and effort, in my opinion. And, um, and I'm kind of a more, you get more honey with, you know, more, more bees with honey than vinegar, whatever, however that goes. So that's kind of my stance on this so far. I just don't think I'm in the place where I hear people that aren't willing to work with us and to say this on the record and come all the way out here and do a tour of our city really means a lot to me. So I just want to say thank you. And also thanks to all the people doing the work. I think that this is really coming from an equity forward kind of place. And I was not shy in my conversation about those concerns with Evan or with anyone that I've talked to about this. It's a real deep concern for me. And I think it's something that we can get lifted and managed. Thank you.
I have a question for Evan. So, um, I mean, I'm going to bring this up anyway, but like with the parking reform, I think it's generally a good idea, but I think you're putting it in the hands of developers and they're going to do the cheapest thing. You know, that's my concern with that particular issue. Sorry. But my question to you is, and I'm going to pick on Cornelius here, but I know there are a lot of issues with Cornelius. So, um, how will you reach out or work with, because I'm going to take a step back here. As you're well aware, when a state mandates things down to our cities, there are specifics of each city that may not fit into this cookie cutter mold. So how will you going forward, um, work with like Cornelius or a city like that, that's, that this is going to be really cumbersome for?
Yeah. Thank you for the question, Counselor. Uh, so the rules, um, right now have varying requirements based on population sizes. So it's not a one size fits all. Cities under 10,000 can ask for exemptions. Um, cities over, uh, 100,000, there are higher requirements. And city over 200,000, there are higher requirements. And as, as noted, some of the climate friendly area stuff was Metro versus the rest. So there are lots of, and some things that I didn't talk about only apply to Eugene and Springfield and San Kaiser. So, so there's a, there's a lot of awareness of the difference in cities and the reality on the ground. We've worked in a city planning program with those, those challenges and those differences. There's a provision that I didn't talk about, um, where Metro can come up with its own solution on parking. And frankly, or anything in the rules. So Metro has a long history of doing regional unique things. And we've been pretty deferential to Metro. Now, Metro takes a while to do those. So we said, all right, that looks like you might get around to that in eight or 10 years. So let's do, let's do this until you come up with something else. So, um, that, that's, that's the opening. Uh, I did go out and tour Cornelius. I talked with Cornelius. I did tour Sherwood as well. And I had those conversations. Uh, I think that in an ongoing way, so, and I, and I did not see, um, that these rules were going to solve or greatly, uh, in, in Greece of parking challenges. Because parking is a challenge in some places, um, under existing rules that cities have adopted.
Without public transportation systems.
And, 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 and cities, so, so you all already are struggling in certain locations, but not in others. And, and, uh, what other cities across the country have done, it said, hey, let's manage parking instead of do a one size fits all, to use your term. Every development has to provide X. Because you have hundreds of households in Tuolton who have no cars. Hundreds of 40 unsensitive data. They are paying for parking. They're not using. And those are the poorest people. This is an equity issue. Currently, currently, the way you manage parking means they're paying for parking at the grocery store that they don't use. Because it's built into the cost of goods. They're paying for parking at their workplace that they don't use. So they're getting fewer wages. They're paying for parking in their housing that they're not using because it's bundled into their housing. So, so it is an equity issue and the equity owes, the affordable housing developers all justified in favor of this parking reform. Opal Environmental Justice, Verde, like Springfield, U D Tenet Association, Catholic Charities, Dianna's stuff. Like this is an equity issue because those people consume less parking than the privilege. So, um, I've gone a little bit astray because I've been hard parking for years. I apologize. But I, I do also, I don't feel like I adequately addressed that. And I know equity is a big concern of lots of yours. So, um, I think that the other thing to realize about parking reform is it's a slow moving thing. And if we need to force correct, we can force correct because development happens pretty slowly. And a lot of developers where in those cities that repealed the parking mandates, they see similar, they see, oh, the developer, the lender needs us, oh, we need to build parking because our tenants want it to succeed in the market. Maybe that's it. And others say, oh, there are a few hundred people who don't own cars. I'm going to build for them. So it kind of has that nuance of the market. You're right. There are some unethical developers and the city has to well manage adjacent street parking to make sure the incentives are right. Where they're still open. So, uh, you've done some of that near your schools. Um, and yeah, that's what cities around work in. So I, I will, I don't know if I totally addressed you. I apologize. I apologize. So we're, we're continuing to reopen in that conversation if at the, a lot of that development happens and it's causing major problem. And you, or Cornelius or you all or whoever comes next year and says, hey, lots of developers are coming in. No one's providing parking. There's no, nothing we can do. Say, okay, let's, that's the reality that we're dealing with. Um, let's take it a fresh look.
So there's some flexibility in there?
There, there, there is, uh, there is flexibility to reopen the rules. Yeah, we can always change our rules.
Yeah.
And
I mean, these parking
Very direct that they, that they wanted us to be open to that conversation.
Yeah. These parking ideas are great if we had a great public transportation system, but we don't. So it's a little difficult.
Yeah, no, I, and, and certainly there are people who manage, given your current public debt without credit. And it's, it'll be tough. I, I totally agree. It's easier when we, you know, better.
Well, thank you for your answer. Thank you.
Councilor Ray.
Yeah. Um, Mayor, could you please state, uh, so people can hear out there, what is the problem that is happening and why? Because I think a lot of people are hearing this conversation, might be hearing this conversation, not understand why are we, what are we talking about? What is the problem? Why, why is the state asking us to do this specific? And I think the city of Tuolton and all the residents will need to know what that is that they're giving them. Because we can drive around the city and highlight a lot of things that are missing or, but if they don't know what, exactly what the options are, then they might say join or not join. I mean, I, I think it's, it's, it's good to state what the problem is. So the public in here, and what is the solution that according to the state or that, that executive order is and what is Springfield is trying to do. So that way, there's a, a clear understanding of what's going on.
So there's a couple of things. So as, uh, both gentlemen mentioned, this is an executive order from the governor trying to implement climate friendly and equitable communities, uh, which everyone's for. I mean, everyone wants to make sure, you know, our climate gets better. We get rid of the carbon. We have better equitable communities. Where the frustration is, is was the rulemaking process that the L C D went through to come, to finally arrive at the rules. I sent numerous letters. I testified. And there's a lot of frustration from the cities and people testified that none of it was incorporated or very little that was incorporated. The L C D did do, make, make some changes that were requested, but didn't address a majority of the things that the cities and L O C brought up. For example, except we're not going to get in the weeds, the parking requirement due by the end of the year is based on, uh, parking requirements cannot be required by cities if the development is within a quarter mile. if the development is within a quarter mile. Half, no, it's quarter mile, was a half mile, they cut it to a quarter mile, correct?
Oh, it's, it's
It's a half mile, sorry. On frequent transit. And people say frequent transit. I said, well, that's a bus line.
That's west.
It could be west. It could be the red and blue shuttle. It could be the shuttle that goes down Portland Road eventually. So anything around those corridors would be subject to these parking regulations. As Mr. Cooper brought up the other day, as Triment changes their routes, it could change everything for us. As they add routes, because we all want more routes, we're all complaining there's a lack of transit here. So more than likely, they'll add more routes. So the, the focus of discussion and disagreement between the cities and D L C D is incorporating the feedback that was given to them. The timelines asking for them to be extended, not on a case by case basis, but they extended totally for the whole, you know, especially the December 31st one, the 2020, 2024 one. And look at these weird rules that have weird impacts like Cornelius that have to be dealt with right away. So the core, this is asking, going to court and asking, can we put a pause on this? And we're not against the rules. We're not against climate friendly. We want equal communities. We just got concerned about how we're going to fund this, how we're going to shift staff priorities as we're going to have to in order to meet these timelines. And how can we make, you know, best make sure that, you know, the results come out are reliable in our community? And that we don't have disparate impacts depending where you are in town. If you're an apartment complex that no longer has a requirement for parking, we went through this with Tuolton Heights. So to me, that's the shortened synopsis of it.
No, I think it's important for people to hear that, what's going on in the conversation because not everybody reads. And if we're making decisions for, or something that's going to either, you know, we're all care about, which is the climate, but also a lot of times it affects communities that are, are in the poor, poorest areas that don't have a car or they use. I'm sorry, but I've, I've seen in my community, my, that sometimes they have more cars because they have their kids living with them, and each one of them has their child, and you know, they all have their cars, and if you drive down Salem, you notice that they have four or five parks in their little front, I mean, yard and all that. So it's not always like, you know, they don't pay for parking or, I mean, they're paying for something that they're not using. That's not always true. But I feel like it's important for people who's, you know, because if we ask the committee, oh, do you want a climate to be, you know, don't you want the climate to be, you know, where we need to take action on that? But then what is the, the other, if we do that, of course, they're going to say yes, but what is the, then what would happen if they, if that happened? Well, now you have to get rid of everything and you're just going to have to use public transportation. Now we reigns here in Oregon. I mean, it's a whole different people, you know, travel at nighttime. I, I mean, it's just, that's why I'm like, we got to also think of like those kinds of situations that will affect our community. Or do we need to put more parking? I mean, all that. So I think it's good for people to understand what's going on.
That's very good, Brett.
Yeah, I'm going to go first.
Okay. I appreciate your input. Thank you very much. I think everyone's asked really good questions and had really good insight because I think this, on the surface, it seems so simple, like a yes or no question to join a lawsuit, but I think it's a lot deeper than that, if you will. I don't think that there is a reasonable idea that the tenants that are in this particular document, this 150 pages of rules, suggestions, regulations, won't ever be adopted. I mean, I think that's the first thing to kind of accept is, you know, we're all going to be working towards these goals. And I, for me, it becomes kind of a question of how are we going to go about working towards these goals? And I feel a little bit, and this is me personally, but I feel a little bit like we're right on the edge of the steamroller and the steamroller is the 150 pages of the mandates. It's the quick deadlines, it's how, or if, or how we would go about getting funding for some of these things. And I feel like if we were able to sort of just, you know, press pause, slow things down just a little bit, stop the steamroller for a second and take that breathing time to figure some of these things out. You know, are there, you know, changes? Are there, you know, accommodations we can come to? Are there ways that the state can help get behind us with funding immediately? Can we, you know, change some of these deadlines where our T S P and everything needs to be changed by the 31st? I mean, my gosh, it's almost September next week, right? And to think that ODOT is going to be able to just cut us a check to help with payments that quickly. I mean, I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm, I'm just not sure exactly how feasible that is. So, you know, my thought is it's better to, if possible, you know, not even think for a minute that we're not going to be doing these tenants because we certainly are, but just to move into it with a little bit more thought, give us a minute to kind of collect ourselves, give, you know, L C D C a minute to get feedback from the cities. Maybe work together a little bit with them to, you know, come up with some quick course corrections that can help cities with the implementation of this. And so that's kind of where my head is because, you know, I, I don't feel in any way should perform that we're not going to be doing these, and I think a lot of these are very, very important. But, you know, they're difficult, they're complicated, there's unintended consequences. I mean, just on, off of 65th Avenue where it connects into Nyberg, there are thousands of apartments. Yeah, and they're on the transit line, but unfortunately, that transit line services very few ultimate work areas. And I just think, you know, again, it creates hardships, which is a completely unintended area. So anyway, that, that's sort of my thought because I do think that we need the majority of this are things that this community does need. I just think that we can get to those projects in a little bit different way. And I think that we need the time, we need the money, we need the clarity. And I appreciate the options of being flexible and working together, but some of that I'd like to see, you know, no offense, but in writing, and I'd like to see some of it happen because, you know, knowing that Metro can step in and make alterations or, you know, we can bring concerns, but just bringing a concern doesn't mean that the concern is going to be met or the rule is going to be changed or the deadline is going to be altered. It could just be, thank you for bringing your concern. We, we know that troubles you. So you know, that's kind of where I am on this, but I do appreciate you coming today and sharing with us. That was really helpful. And it's a good, it's a good sign of goodwill.
If, if I may just briefly point out our condition, you don't have to update your transportation system plan by the end of the year. But that, it's just after the end of the year, the new rules for transportation system plans updated after that, after meeting these rules. So it doesn't require action.
Sorry if I missed. Thank you.
To me, like I said, I'm all for the C F E C. The issue I have is a lot of mandates have come down from the state recently, H B 2001, H B 2003, law file mandates. All these things are coming down the pipe. The city, the size of ours doesn't have staff. Portland has staff for this. Beaverton has staff for this. We don't have staff for this. And to redirect, have my city manager have to redirect staff every six months because a new director from the state has come down and taken away home rules from the city frustrates. And, you know, I agree with the goal, but not the implementation. So that's one of the reasons I have a big problem with this. And we mentioned the M S P, that M S P, the T S P earlier tonight in Cora. So here we are going to talk about modifying our T S P to envision our growth because we're going to add transportation capacity. When you add transportation capacity, it triggers C F E C. So what is it going to cost us in addition to our costs that we've already estimated for our Cora? Metro, I, I have concerns with Metro. Metro has never been in front of cities. We all know it. It's a very frustrating relationship with Metro that, and Metro has capacity issues right now with what's on their plate right now. I don't see them even looking at this in the short term. In short term, I mean, in the next year or so. Because you're dealing with all the metro houselessness and the bond stuff they have to deal with. This is going to be, you know, overwhelm their staff. And one of the option number three about other strategies working with the legislature, we don't have a lobbyist. Other cities do. That's what they're going to rely on. The cities that don't join this lawsuit have paid lobbyists. Beaverton has a lobbyist. Portland has a lobbyist. Tiger has a lobbyist. You know what that lobbyist is going to do when the session starts? Talking about this to their legislators. So that's one of my reasons why I'm not wild about option number three. So I, so no surprise here, I'd like to join the lawsuit. And, you know, and work with these other cities and, and D L C D where we follow us, and maybe we can work this out in a timely met, in a timely fashion. It doesn't have to go to the whole court system. Maybe the parties come to reality and make an agreement before, you know, the judge is getting involved. The comments.
This is such a complicated thing, and so I appreciate everyone's information. And I guess if I felt like that D L C D really had the appetite for making these modifications, you would have done it by now. And so I'm kind of confused by, you know, it's good to hear that you're here and taking tours. And I think you can clearly hear some of the issues and knowing that our mayor has testified and other people at this meeting have testified and those haven't been heard. I'm a little concerned about your good, not you personally, but your organization's goodwill and good faith in how a negotiation would go best for our city. And why do we have to keep doing one offs every time for every city? There's what, how many cities? And I guess my only other thought and concern is that we're in an election year, like, you know, you know, mandates come down in all sorts of different ways and what could change in this next, you know, 10 months. And so I'm a little concerned about how that could look and, and, and I, and that concerns me as to look at option three for other strategies, like you got to put your money where your mouth is, and, and I'm not sure that that's happened from my perspective as of, as of this moment.
Other comments, questions?
If we join illegal action, my only question is, what does that do with our future relationship with D L C D?
D L C D gets challenged all the time by cities and D L C D challenges cities all the time.
You know, it's funny because I talked to a lawyer today, actually, and, and a lot of times lawyers will tell you not to confer with the people that you're suing with. So I think it really takes a lot off the table for us, and I don't think it's wise. I also don't think it's going to cost no money to do this. I'd rather pay for a lobbyist or join with a lobbyist and get some support around this. And finally, I've just have never been a reactionary, I'm going to go sue you instead of having a conversation about solutions. And I feel that I don't think that the culture of our council has historically been that way either. So I'd be surprised if we went for that, but I've been surprised before. And, but I certainly am not interested in joining a lawsuit. I think that the money is going to multiply. I think the relationships are going to get strained. And I also think whether it's an intended consequence or not, the, the progress that we make on the actual climate change and the climate crisis that we're facing, that it's a failure of leadership by our council to take it seriously and to move forward in a way that's best practices with rapport building, not only with your organization, but with also, I mean, I can call our local lawmakers. I don't necessarily need a lobbyist to talk about these things and advocate for these things. Like I said, I have a meeting with, with Council Rosenthal and Mayor Gamba coming up this week. I'm very interested in creative solutions and I feel empowered around being a change maker on this as an elected official to represent my constituents that care deeply about this climate crisis. So that, that's where I'm at. Thank you. And I hate to disagree with you, Mayor.
It's okay.
My favorite.
Part of the deal.
Make a motion and see if we have any support for any of the options.
Sure.
I guess since it's not really a resolution, I guess we can just do hands up.
Well, what we would do is we would direct, we would ask staff to come back with a, what's the, Chris, what we ask staff to come back with?
You would ask staff to return with a resolution authorizing them to take the steps necessary to participate in the litigation.
All right. Well, then I'll make that motion to ask staff to bring back, bring back, excuse me, resolution to pave the way to join in the lawsuit with the other eight cities.
Second.
I second it.
I have a motion in a second to ask staff to bring back a resolution to join the city of Springfield's lawsuit against D L C D. Any discussions on the motion?
I have a clarification. So the motion can, I mean, the resolution can come back. We can all continue to gather our information. It, it's not a fore drawn conclusion that it'll pass.
I think would pass. I mean, this is
Okay.
If the votes are for the resolution, it would pass that night.
Okay.
So I have a motion in a second. I need further discussion.
This is a very difficult decision, and I think we all just have to look at it with what we think is best. My decision's based. This is tough, but my decision's based on what I think is best for the climate.
So then just do a vote, just have a vote, but I just is, we have to do a head roll call or just one big?
Yes.
Yeah. So all those in favor of joining the city of Springfield in the lawsuit, raise your hands and say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Two, three. What was the count?
Four to three.
Four to three.
Four to three.
Passing?
Yes.
Usual three foot.
Mr. Mayor? Let me see if I can get this on the record. What I believe I just saw was there was a motion and a second to direct staff to draft a resolution authorizing a city to participate in the litigation. And if I counted hands, that motion was approved by a vote of four to three.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
All right.
Question.
For Chris?
Oh, not for Chris. I just, for this council, because I'm, I'm kind of surprised, to be honest. And I think that just if the department is working with us, if there were some outcome measures that would make people more comfortable, if there's something that we could get done between now and that council meeting, if there's ability to negotiate before we take that final vote, that's what I would like to know. And feel free to write to me. I think it's important that we do this in a way that doesn't waste our taxpayers' money on lawsuits that affect other cities and not our own.
Chris, you were going to say something?
So in terms of litigation, it was suggested and not without merit that it's a bad idea to sue people you have to work with. And in general, I think that's probably true, but this episode reminds me of, of another episode I was involved in with the department about a month ago. Our firm represents a small city on the edge of the metro area that adopted an economic opportunity, economic opportunities analysis. And D L C D objected to some of the methodology in that analysis and threatened to file a legal challenge to that. They have to go to the, to the commission, the staff has to go to the commission, ask for that authority to file a legal challenge. And I argued to the commission that we're happy to work with the department to address their concerns. There's no need to file a legal challenge. We're open to working with the department. And the department director said on the record, we're willing, happy and willing to work with the city. In which case, there's no need for the litigation. So the shoe was absolutely on the other foot just a month ago, and L C D C authorized the litigation. And their reasoning was there's no incentive for the city to negotiate with the department without this lawsuit. So while I respect the, what the department is saying that we're happy to work with you, the, the history of this adoption is, doesn't really, isn't really consistent with that in their own actions about a month ago when the shoe was on the were directly contrary to that. We're directly contrary to that, so in terms of, of what is gained by filing litigation, it does give local government some leverage against the department if we want those conversations to actually occur.
Thanks, Chris. All right, that closes that item, so we go ahead on to, as removed from consent, we had none. And so that brings us to council communications. Further council communications. Council Brooks.
I just want to say I attended the Tuolatin Chamber of Commerce, we've been, I've been working with them on the key leaders breakfast, which is coming up. I think it's September 8th, so please. Oh, I do want to make an announcement too, I got an email verifying that. From Mayor Joe Buck that they are not joining the lawsuit in Lake Oswego, so that was not correct. And I'd be surprised if Wes Lynn is, so I think some of the conversation was not accurate. I think it's a very important piece, especially coming from our lawyer. The next piece is the chambers having their key leader breakfast, I just want to make sure that everyone's invited. They're going to be talking about our favorite tolling. And it's September 8th at 7:00 a.m., be there, be square. And we were at a networking thing, I saw the mayor there and we did a little. Good. Member, memorandum for the crawfish festival, so people were ready to move to the next thing, but we. We said our goodbyes to the crawfish festival and I just want to make it really clear that. You know, the funding and the organization that was running that, they just can't hold it up anymore, so it's not something that we as a city don't. Like, but we as a city, and especially if you can get this going with the parks bond, can do a lot of other really great things in the city, so I just want people to understand that. Thank you.
I just want to invite the community and everyone here to an event being hosted by a variety of prevention or substance use prevention organizations in the area. Ryan Leaf will be telling his story called The Inspiring Truth, it'll be at Rolling Hills Community Church, Monday, August 29. There'll be a short vendor fair, I guess, from 5:30 to 7:00 and Mr. Leaf will be speaking from 7:00 to 8:30. And for those of you that don't know, he's a former quarterback at Washington State University, O-Ducks. And he advocates for those struggling with mental health and behavioral health issues and encourages audience to transform how we think about. Mental health issues and addiction, and I really encourage folks to attend if you can. Can find it on Eventbrite.
I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved. Second.
Adjourn this meeting, all those in favor, say aye. Thank you for attending tonight, have a very.